Meeting for Thursday, February second. Um, much to open the hearing, motion's open in here, second, all of us in favor, aye, okay. The first item on the agenda is a continuation for uh two thirty six Maple Street. Is the applicant um present, looks like they're present via Zoom?
I'm I'm here as the attorney for the applicant.
Okay, could you just uh state your name again, just for the record and give us kind of a brief update from the last meeting?
Uh, yeah, I wa- I wasn't here at the last meeting, but uh my name's Stephen Greenwald and um the purpose of. The pur- the purpose of my being here today is concerning the special permit. Um, as I indicated, I assumed that you got my request from Amy. The one year from the issuance of the permit has gone by without um. Substantial work beginning, so. Other than for good cause, it would have lapsed by now, and what what we're looking for is uh recognition from. From the the board that there has been good cause and uh to to acknowledge that and to. Grant an extension of the time by which work uh needs to commence. And uh the good cause was substantially MIPA driven. Uh Kevin had a lot of trouble getting the special uh getting his MIPA permit. Because of problems with D E P uh which were eventually overcome the uh. Yeah, obviously, without his MIPA permit, he wasn't gonna go in there and do work under this permit that would not really work out very well.
So this is for the earthwork? Okay.
Sorry, I I.
That's okay, no, it's our agenda as another before, but that's okay. I think I'm good to, if ev- everyone else is good to take the red mill.
Is that all right?
No, it's not a hearing, you're just basically voting to um extend it.
And it's just like uh Steven was saying that it's been, it's the year has lost, and this is just for the extensive.
That's correct, and you've already, you know, made a decision rendered to support that decision, so it's just to extend that.
And I guess do we just have to see kind of what the, I guess, what he was speaking to Brian, like with the, what conditions have led to. And going past the extension date?
Yeah, whatever the board. Nice question.
Yeah.
So Stephen, um when do you or when does Kevin anticipate starting?
Well, what what I what I'm requesting is is a year from today. Uh, but I I think that. He anticipates starting uh sooner than that, uh with with MIPA out of the way. Uh, we have to kind of work some things out with the current owners because he has not closed yet. Um, but I I I know that he is hoping uh. With an extension from you to start at least tree removal and and some of the other work uh fairly soon.
So he sold, he sold the project?
No, 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 he hasn't even purchased it yet.
Oh, I gotcha, oh, I see, alright, so this was um just the sheer volume of. Material being removed, right, that was the.
Yes.
Okay, so the schedule would be the same in terms of, I don't know, we.
We did have hours of operation and.
Yeah.
And the direction that they would go and all of that stuff.
There was no request to change the permit as it was written, it was simply just to extend it, you know, for that year. So none of the, there was not a request to change any part of the decision, it was simply just to ask for that extension until. Um, so Stephen, you were thinking February second of twenty twenty four?
Yes. And I I don't think there'd be um any difficulty uh getting in there and getting significant work done under the permit so that. Uh, I I can't, I I I hope I don't eat my words, but I I can't imagine having to come back to have it extended again.
In in my mind, I know I have, we we all don't have any control, but the. The perfect time to do this, and I know it's gonna take many months, would be to really hit it hard during the summer, because we're not dealing with. School and the same level of traffic during the. I know we talked about that, that like, that would be ideal.
And what kind of activities happened thus far then, there re- there really hasn't been any of them?
Well, no- nothing under this permit, I know he's uh, you know, he he's. For for our purposes tonight, I mean, it it's it's just the permit, but. For him, it's a, it's a project, it's a global project, and he's been doing work on uh for the project, he took down the Domino's building. And he did a lot of the sewer work to uh accommodate the town, the town's needs, um get them out of the way. Get those issues out of the way, so he's been working on, he's been certainly putting his resources into it. Uh, and uh we're just trying to clean up some of the paperwork now and then uh and then get to work.
I mean, I guess if the stipulations are still the same, then I guess like you're saying. I guess, yeah, it's a tough area, obviously, so I don't know, I guess.
It was reasonable to me.
Yeah.
Unless someone else has anything to say, I'll I'll move to grant the extension.
I'll second, I have no objection.
Discussion, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that passes, alright, thanks Stephen.
Yeah, could I just ask you one question, folks, um I I you you'll you'll issue uh something formal that I can record?
Correct, I'll get a letter drafted with um the chairman's signature stating the vote and the extension.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yes.
Tha- thank you very much, folks.
Welcome.
Hey, the next item on the agenda is uh continuation for two thirty six Maple Street.
Was that what you just called prior, I guess?
Yes, yeah, I got my own, I'm sorry.
My pop on mute and just kind of went down, so sorry about that.
Nah, that's okay, I'm glad, I'm glad you guys are doing Zoom, sorry, we can't be there, we're all spread out. Um, Brian Martinelli with Centerline Communications, and it's for AT and T, so I know this is a continuation, but. We uh, and I know you requested photo simulations or additional ones with balloon test um. So typically on on an existing structure, you won't do a balloon test, it could get tangled, could be windy. Balloon tests are normally done with new towers, so we actually have a more accurate way to depict what this extension is gonna look like. And I mean, I have a couple of folks online as well, so hopefully um. Yeah, I I I've never seen where they attached a balloon to an existing tower, but. Um, hopefully you guys can accept the additional pictures we took, we had. Um, there's a number that I didn't submit that were from the residential zone that even in the winter time. The top of this tower wasn't visible, so um and I have um Adams on the line as well. Who took the pictures and I mean, so unfortunately, this is the only way, this is really the only way to accurately. Represent an extension um, and I think. The other available rad center, which you know typically colocation is preferred, so if it would've been eighty five feet. It just wouldn't have given AT and T the coverage, because you know, we don't wanna have to extend this tower. If it wasn't necessary, so they need the height and um. This is the next best solution in in building a new tower, so. Do you have any questions about the simulations, how they're created, um hopefully the additional ones make it a little more palatable, but. I also have some pictures from the residential area and we we couldn't even attempt to do a simulation. Closer than the gym, um the gym uh gymnastics studio, because it wasn't. It just, it just wasn't visible, and the closer you get to the tree line, less visible. The tower is obviously for a number of reasons, but.
In these simulations then, Brian, it's, this is just Photoshop, basically, is that kind of how you accomplished it?
Well, it's Photoshop, but it's it's using a a a a three D model based.
So it is to scale.
It is, it it's absolutely the scale within, I don't know, A- Aaron's on, if you could attest to what's the. The error margin, if there is one.
Okay.
A- Aaron, are you on? He's on mute, but um.
But that's roughly, because it's it's twenty feet, right, extending at twenty feet?
It is twenty feet, yeah.
Yeah, it's very accurate. The sixteenth of an inch, I would say.
What was that, is the sixteenth of what?
Yeah, sixteenth of an inch.
Okay.
Yeah, very accurate.
I don't know, I know for me, I feel like, I know, this is, you know, the perfect location kind of for a tower, but. I just have in principle kind of that it's already extended beyond what the Bible requires, so I'm just worried about. I don't know if any other members do, but setting a precedent that again, because.
Could I, um, just for one, one moment, Brian, I just wanted to let you know, I did speak with some um staff within the town hall. Just the the higher ups, and um there was the opinion that it is. Assisting and helping those residents that do have AT and T, and that this is governed under the FCC guidelines. Um, that they do have to comply with. Whatever that, you know, means to you, just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
I was driving from New York earlier today and started noticing them, especially, you know, getting ready for the for for this hearing. And you notice some much closer to the highway, and then there's one in Norwood. Uh, I'm driving here from Norwood, there's one right next to Route one, and it's right up there and it's in your way, whereas this one is. Quite tucked away and the fact that you can only see it from Maple Street.
It really would be from like four ninety five.
And four ninety five and not even not that much, it's not that close to four ninety five, compared to the other one, that's. Some of them are right up again, so. Um, Brian, just a quick question, have you um, do you have examples of where you extended other towers to to similar lengths? Uh, in Massachusetts, are you aware of any?
I think, I think Zach might be able to speak to that, he's our engineer, um, he's probably been involved with more. Sites than I, but yes, I mean, typically, they don't like to extend towers, um, you know, it's it's a lot costly, but if. The cost to build a site, um, if if you're gonna be at eighty five feet or below the tree line, it's. You're gonna need two or three more sites to offload that one to help, so you'd rather have one site that kind of cover a little bit more. Of an area.
Do you have kind of a generator that goes next to it as well and uh buildings to support the tower usually, or is it kind of self sufficient? So you.
Well, there's backup ba- there's backup battery, there is um, there is an equipment um. Uh, hold on a second.
But by extending it, you're pretty much saving on uh pretty much space and material generally, since.
You you're getting more coverage from the site, so these things operate with line of sight. So you you know, if you're below the tree line, it's not gonna do too much, especially in the summertime, you know, in the wintertime, you might get. Um, some signals that go through trees, but it's it's just not worthwhile.
And and I assume this is, uh, this came to fruition due to uh residents around Bellingham and the surrounding areas requesting. Uh, better coverage, right?
Well, the FCC mandates, you have to provide seamless, reliable coverage, the carriers can lose their license, so. You know, of course, uh uh from the, from the get go, they filled the main roads and stuff, and then ultimately, as people drop their landlines. Residents, you know, do wanna have reliable coverage in the home as well, so you, there's a need for more sites. This, and like I said, we always try to find existing structures, uh, you know, i- if if this, this was built to be a hundred and seventy foot tower. You know, we might not be coming for an extension, but um unfortunately, you know, and we have structurals to to show that it can. Um, it can be extended, which is really beneficial, because sometimes the cost of beefing up these towers is very expensive as well.
Thank you, Brian, uh, my my only other question would be, uh, are there any uh negative effects that you know of other than just. It being high and being visible, uh, is there any other possible negative effect?
Well, hopefully, the, hopefully, the photo sims will show you the aesthetics aren't really a negative, I mean.
Right.
You know, especially from the residential zone, I don't think when you're driving on the highway, you're gonna be looking around, but you know. An extra twenty feet on a hundred and um. What is it, hundred and twenty two foot tower, as you can see, you can see the side by side, I mean, it's not. Really um, you know, in my opinion, I think, well, I think they're beautiful, but that's, that's. Um, so yeah, it's not really, uh, especially, there's only one residential zone that. Is in proximity to this.
So my my question, there's no other uh negative, even if it's not really negative, right, but there's no other effects that it might have on. Uh, my, you know, bird migration or anything like that, I'm not very familiar with any other side effects that it might have, right?
No, and and we actually are aware, uh, we've, you know, our environmental people are very conscious of. Birds, and if it's a bird site, it's it's flagged, and we're only able to build certain months of the year and stuff like that, this isn't one. Um, there've been a couple of sites that there were eagle, there were baby eagles and then. The the top, and we had to kind of just mix that till they flew the coop, so to speak, but yes.
Yeah.
Environmental, wh- when I started, environmental uh factors weren't as big as they are now, but that's really the most deciding factor in in. Even when you're digging and building a new tower and stuff like that, so.
I'm glad to hear that, yeah, I've been, most, a lot of construction sites nowadays will stop everything if they see an eagle nest or off brain nest.
Yeah.
They'll delay the year, great, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Brian, do you have a rendering from four ninety five, what the view would look like from there?
The the closest, the best example would be um. The uh, what would that be, the third page from uh. Right from the entrance of the the facility, so four ninety five would be to the left of that, you know, if if you're. If you're driving.
If if you were actually on four ninety five.
Uh, uh, yes, I mean, if if my, if my uh, what would you call it, yes.
Is it view four, is that what you're?
View four is um right from the entrance of Maple Street and the uh. What would you, what is that, a landscaping facility in a camp bow wow or something, mulch? So yeah, four would be the best scenario, and then there's, if you look closer, there's some trees. That would even further block as you're traveling, would that be eastbound? So no, we, you know, I don't think it's safe anyway to to kind of pull over on the side, take pictures on the highway, but I don't know if um. If if there were any shots taken.
I um, I I share Brian's thoughts about. Uh, you know, this is already larger than the structure necessarily allowing town that we're adding to it. And um seeing a visual from the ground, seeing it from. The highway, seeing it from the old past, seeing residential areas in person has helped us in the past. I understand that the challenges of attaching a balloon onto the top of the equipment there, but perhaps you can run a balloon from the ground up. You know, kind of like that, just to get a sense, because it is. The, and and I'm mindful of the fact that this antenna is smacked down in the middle of, but. A very industrial zone, and I hate to see a race to the bottom where there's, there's gigantic mounds of mulch. Uh, right next to this, and you drive by in four ninety five, and it's just a horrible eyesore as it is now. And if we're, if we're just adding to that, um, it it would just get a better sense of the aesthetics.
Well, like Aaron mentioned, they they, that picture you're seeing is is what it's gonna look like within sixteen. Of an inch, so if we floated a balloon, say, it'd have to be twenty, forty feet from the base of this at. And we would be, we'd have to visually erase the pole that's there, and the pole would be to move location at a hundred and forty foot.
We would, we would actually go and observe it, you wouldn't have to take a picture of it, we would just show up one day and look at it. Guess what we've done in the past?
For new towers, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. This this is just a more accurate, so I so I'm not gonna, I've been doing this twenty two years, I've I've never heard of that, not to say it's wrong, but. Typically, on an extension, that that the more accurate way to to do, to show the twenty foot. Is is how it, we we did it, and that's why we put, when I, when I heard the. The request, you know, I I talked to a couple of people, and it it just, uh, it was a lot of, not confusion, but it's a lot of um. Just trying to figure out how actually we would go about doing that, and that was our, that that was, an idea was to move like. Forty or fifty feet away and float it at the hundred and forty, but, you know, even balloon test with the wind and everything like that, it's just um. We just couldn't figure out, so I thought maybe these simulations and have an Aaron on to actually explain how he put it together might. Make a little more uh, eh, make a little more sense, at least to me, but you know, I, I don't know um.
Brian, can you run another balloon from the top of the tower, another twenty feet?
That's, that's what we were talking about. Our concern is getting tangled in the antennas that are atop, our concern is the wind, our concern is having a guy. Up there to actually attach it with a bucket truck.
Well, you have to go up there anyway, if you're gonna add add another twenty feet anyway, so I don't see.
Yeah, we coordinate with, we coordinate with carriers and everything when we're ready to start construction and deploy that situation, but. So so they shut down and stuff, but um, could could we do it uh? If we could have, if if it was something that was easy to do, um, I I'm pretty sure I would have done, you know, Amy made it pretty clear how you guys felt. About the balloon test, but I thought um, just explaining the way we did our simulations is. I I thought, personally, I think it's a little more accurate, but um. I I don't know, you know. So, like I said, in order to do a balloon test, all the carriers would have to shut down, and we'd have to just um.
Couldn't you just run a balloon from the base of the. On the ground?
And then where would it go, though? It's gotta be tethered to a string.
Yeah.
So it would go intertwined between three carriers antennas.
You don't have to run it up a pole, run it up somewhere close to it, so it don't, it won't. Just to get a sense of the, the.
Well, that would be, that would be a sense of what the tower would look like fifty feet away, so, uh, you know. We're giving you a sense of what the extension is gonna look like on this exact tower, so that's where I thought it was um, you know. Way more beneficial than seeing a tower fifty feet away, because.
I think, well, I think the difference is that, I think with, when it's been in the past, is there's something about just being out there and seeing something at the height. Whereas with these, like, I think you're right, like, it's accurate, but it's hard to really feel that from just looking at the simulation. But I don't know.
Do you wanna have Aaron, do you wanna have Aaron explain exactly, like, just walk you through it, brief, layman's terms, how he produces the simulation, it's not just.
Yeah, I'll just let Amy, yeah, you go.
We're not just cutting and pasting and throwing things up there, so, yeah.
We just also make sure that, just to make it clear, this doesn't have to be unanimous decision among all the board members, if. If there are members that don't feel that it warrants a balloon test, then that's up to the board to decide, if it's not a unanimous decision, and some people feel that. What's been presented is fine, that's okay too, so I think we need to explore that, if everybody doesn't feel that that's necessary, that's fine, if you all do, that's fine too. But I think, you know, it's worth it to have um him go through his presentation.
But I just, one more question, the, can you go back again, how you said about, I just wanna try to understand again, you were saying about the regulations as far.
I did talk to Jim tonight, and um, you know, he was pretty clear with me that the FCC regulates this. And I also, you know, had said, previous to this, I did talk to the administration here, and the feeling was that. This helps the residents of Bellingham, and if, you know, obviously, if it's, it's not, you know, where would the other location be? Are you gonna be disturbing another area, and that's for you guys to decide, um. So I just.
I haven't heard anything on that, where the other location would be.
Right, and we don't know, so um, so it's just. It is what it is, so you guys, you know, obviously, that's what you're here to discuss.
Okay, the the uh FCC federal law, uh, Trump's state. There's certain things that boards can consider not, the radio frequency and the health effects of radio frequency is not something that we could use. As uh, as a metric to deny this application, that's what the FCC regulates and mandates. Uh, that's what we can, but certainly from the height of this pole, um, that's certainly not dictated. By the FCC.
Okay. Alright, yeah, Brian, yeah, um, next thing, uh, yeah, Brian, you can go ahead and do your presentation.
Yeah, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Aaron speak to this, but I I've been involved with a number of balloon tests, and they were all, you know, I said they've always been on. Raw lands when you're trying to create an object from nothing that's out there, but we have a hundred and twenty foot structure that. Gives us a great idea on what that twenty foot will look like additionally, so, you know, like I said, I've, I I've never been. In a case where we did a balloon test for existing structure, but Aaron's gonna just.
I guess, is there a possibility, I'm just kinda, you know, spitballing, but, that you that you could do the balloon test just adjacent to it? Or is that?
I think we talked about that, it would, it wo- it wouldn't be accurate, unfortunately, it would be, we'd have to erase the pole that's there now. And this would be another pole, twenty foot, thirty foot, forty foot away from where the existing structure is.
Not for a photo, but.
That's what, I think what I'm wondering is, Brian, with the balloon test before, I'm thinking you're thinking of that it's useful to be at the. Location, walking around.
Yeah.
To see it in person, different, that's I'm, you know.
Rather than a, yeah, let let me have Aaron just explain how he puts it together.
I'm thinking is that, because these, I think these simulations, like you're saying, are extremely accurate, but it's hard, you can't really feel it. Like you could if it's a balloon out there and you can ride from one point or walk from one point to another. But I don't know, I mean, again, I don't know.
I agree. I'll go ahead.
It was not the accuracy that you're, you guys are concerned about, it's just being out.
Are you guys, are you gentlemen, looking for more views or just having it in person, you're not looking for more angles, really with a three D model? Are you looking more for having it there in person, getting that feel?
I appreciate the scale, knowing. That personally, though, it challenged me, we couldn't see things hard to.
I completely understand that, when it's a new structure, I would also prefer having a balloon, but I could see Brian's point of view of. If you place it next to it, it's gonna be really windy, it's gonna get entangled with it, if you put it on top, it can still, unless they should probably, you know. Unless it's really windy, it'll get entangled sideways, but um, I look a lot of, I've I've seen a lot of three D models before and. Uh, it seems like for the distance, view number four is uh, so the view from, yeah, the view from. I four ninety five is about three quarters closer, um, sorry, quarter, the distance closer than view number four, so it's gonna be. That that's gonna be the difference in how it's gonna look, um, but maybe I would be, I would still like to see what it's gonna look like from my. I four ninety five, but I'd like to see, um, I'm okay, I I know the rest of the board might not be, and seeing maybe three more views at least. From I four ninety five, you know, uh, a bit north of it, a bit south of it, uh, just seeing it from those point of views, I would feel more comfortable. If the balloon test is gonna be a challenge, I do see it being a challenge from being next to it, because you're either gonna be way too far, it's not gonna. Not gonna give you what you need, or unless they go up and place it on top, but I understand with the, you know, it's. There's always the the cost, they have to mobilize machinery and go and turn off, turn it off, and it's gonna be, uh, the residents will probably not like having. Their reception gone for, for that period of time, that's my opinion, uh, I think if I got three more views. From my four ninety five, you know, a bit far away, really the closest point, and then an equidistant down set, you know. East or south, I would feel more comfortable, that's that's my opinion.
Just keep in mind, the further away you get from this thing. The less you're gonna see it, so there is a view, there's a view right underneath it, and there's a view from elevated in the air, and then there's, yeah, I mean. We could do a hundred different views. You know, it's not gonna change what it looks like, and in my opinion, I would rather see what the cell tower extension is gonna look like. Rather than see a balloon floating in the air, this is an ac- this is an, within sixteenth of an inch, accurate representation of what it's gonna look like, I don't know.
Yeah, I I do agree with with Brian on this one, um, view number four, it looks like the top section is bigger than the. Section below it, but then view number two, it looks like. Section below it, but then view number two, it looks like the top section is smaller than the section below it, is is it? Is it larger or smaller than the section?
Uh, yeah, what was that again, I'm sorry, maybe uh.
So the existing section, the the new section compared to the existing section, number two, it looks like the top section looks smaller. Than the existing section, but then if I look at view number four, the top section looks a little e- larger than. The se- the section that's existing, just which one is it? It it must be the view, it must, it must be the view from the.
Yeah, one, you're looking up at it, right? Is that what you're talking about? Yeah. Go ahead, Aaron.
Just a perspective.
Yeah, it's just the perspective.
Okay, so is it, is it gonna be larger in diameter, if you're, I remember seeing the plans, I just forgot the, whether it was larger or smaller.
It's similar, it's very similar in uh diameter.
Okay, so almost the same diameter overall?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a platform that is uh. It's got nine antennas on it, and it's it's a typical platform, they, the like, as the one below it.
Okay, that 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 answers my question, thank you. But I'm I'm okay with, at least a view from I four ninety-five, the closest point, um just the number four is still farther away. If you look at the map, it's still farther away from what it would look like from I four ninety-five, that's. But that's, I would still like to hear from the rest of the board if they think that that was the plan.
And obviously, it's fully within your, you know, purview, if you feel that you present in a strong case and you feel that. This is more than enough for us to vote, that's also, you're obviously able to do that.
No, I I know, and I I wish I would have really studied y- your ordinance, and I mean typically, we have an attorney. Involved in these things, but you know, co-location is usually the preferred method of 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 getting sites on air. Granted, you know, extensions are are. Subset of a co-location, but. The eighty-five feet just won't work for us, um, you know, if you guys are adamant, I I don't wanna go down a road and get denied if we need some more photo sims, but I. Balloon test is just, um, I I think, I I don't think there's a way we could do that, if you want more simulations. And we could take pictures and have Aaron do simulations all the way down four ninety-five, but typically, when you're driving on four ninety-five, I don't see. People looking around, similar to telephone poles, they just, they pop up, and it just goes in your your purview, um but you know. This is a site we need, or I wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be spending the money um to do this, we wouldn't be extending this tower. And it it is, the the benefits are definitely.
Okay, just do the balloon test, just do the balloon test.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Which one?
A balloon test, from the ground.
From the ground.
Be exactly where the the pole is.
Okay.
I understand that there's, there's, we certainly don't want to jeopardize any equipment on the lifting pole. Just to get a sense, just make us feel better about what it is we're gonna see after this is done, because like I said. This is already a gigantic freighter of a gigantic mulch. And that places a. Sensitive point in town, that whole sensitive area, with the people on Maple Street and people that drive by that. Drive into Bellingham, mountain to Bellingham, you're left, gigantic mulch, and now a a larger. So, so just give us a, give us a little peace of mind, so we can say, you know what, you know, folks, I know you're upset, but we we kicked the tires on this. We had them float a balloon, it wasn't too crazy, so just make it happen.
Okay.
Can I interject for a second?
Go ahead, Adam.
Yes.
Yeah, so. From talking with Aaron before this meeting. Um I guess the challenging part about doing a balloon test is that all the carriers at that cell site. Have to turn off their equipment and unfortunately, because cell. Carriers are competitive with one another, they don't necessarily have to do that. So the easier.
He's talking about doing it, you know, twenty, thirty feet away from the actual tower itself, so.
And that doesn't involve turning off the other carrier cell service?
Yeah, it won't involve that, yeah, it's just, I don't know, but but quick question. Do you wanna show the tower at the location where we float the balloon, or like? Uh I'm trying to get my head around.
I think just the balloon, for the height, I think it's just the height, right, whether it's twenty, thirty feet away from where the tower is currently is. Doesn't matter, right? Is that kinda what you guys are?
Yes, yes, that's a scale, I'm not, we're not trying to be difficult.
No, but you understand how, you understand how that sounds, you you probably see a balloon thirty feet away from the actual tower, then. Representation of what the site's gonna look like within the sixteenth of an inch. But I I I'm not gonna, I'll leave it at that, and I'll.
What do we, I guess for a vote, do we just need a majority would be for the pass? As we could, I mean, obviously, does this vary?
But that's, that's, that's what I'm trying, I I know, you know, that's my dilemma, but um. Yeah, if if that's what we need to do, um, we can, we can definitely do that. Just not close to the, you know, not too close to the. Existing tower, and then we'll uh, I will let you guys know when it goes up. Pending, you know, windy day or a delay or something like that, and then uh. You could even go to the property when we do it.
You look at the um, let's say you you do have a, sorry, if you do have a balloon up, right? I mean, you're gonna have to use your, I mean, you do, when you walk around the site. You'll see the balloon, but uh what about like how how the light hits it and? You know, this, the the rendering that that I created um. I know you guys understand that it's very accurate, but.
Yeah, no, again, I mean, we can take.
It's a very um close representation to how it's gonna look. You know, after it's built, that's how it's gonna look, like, you don't have to use your imagination, that's it.
I think to me, it it's more the, about having something on the ground that you can walk around and take a look at physically, it sounds like.
Yeah, I could, but the pole, the the actual pole is already there, the existing monopole, you just have to, you know. It's it's just gonna be another twenty feet above that.
True, and again, I mean, it's totally obviously within your uh rights if you wanna just take it to vote. Cuz we can do just the call to vote tonight.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll um. Will we uh push the meeting to next month? Is that what, eight, you know?
Yes, it would be continued to. Let me see, March second.
And and I think that if, you know, give us, you give us notice and say, look, the balloon, I I know you can't keep the balloon up there for a long time. We'll keep the balloon there for four hours on this day, make sure that you come and look at it, you know, as long as we. We know, and again, it's not, at least for me, it's not being, listen, not, you know, I hope I'm not in difficult, I just. Looking at a three-inch rendering of what this whole look like, look like, it's just. It just doesn't help me, uh and I get, you know what I mean, so, and and I appreciate your, your working.
Oh, it's okay, I mean, the balloon is big, it's five by five, and you know, it's, there'll be. Hundred and forty-foot tape measure attached to it and. We'll uh see if we can get that done, hopefully, when we need that, when we need the new um. Pictures by Amy or when uh.
I guess just to have it up sometime between.
You know, and it's probably dependent on the weather too, so that's, you know, we may have to continue that until, you know, the next hearing. Based on the weather. So.
I hope we can squeeze a day and we'll get it done.
Okay, and the board will, you know, hopefully, you know, find the time to get there to see that, so we'll have to get, you know, some timeframe. To be able to do, go out and see that, because it's probably time-sensitive as far as when we can get out there.
Yeah, that's true.
So, um, thank you.
Does that sound, sound like a plan?
Sure.
I got one last question, it, I'm sure you, other alternatives to uh. To raising the height of the pole, a new location, is there, have you looked at that at all?
Um, I I don't think there are any existing structures that would work, so. I haven't done the site act on. That per se, though, I don't know if this was a search ring or this was, hey, we have a tower, um, I know you need to site in the area, so. Let's extend it, but um. If there are no structures, it would be a new tower somewhere in the vicinity, so, but I just haven't um. I I haven't done the site acquisition on on this particular. Site, so it would have to be somewhere close, cuz there's obviously a need in that areas, um.
Yeah, the other thing that we also got at other times is showing the the areas that require more service.
Oh, like the coverage map?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want a coverage map too, you're saying?
Yes.
Or was in the past, we've seen, that is true, that we've seen it where it shows just kinda where. You know, where strong, weak coverage, and it kinda shows the necessity for the additional.
Coverage, but is the thought that there, is the thought that we're not, we don't really need the site, or is the thought that we need the height?
Well, for for me, it it's, that would be for a another site rather than here.
We, okay. You wanna see where we, where the rest of the gaps are, you mean in the town?
Yes.
Well, okay.
Or is the intention really art that you just wanna see, just visually to get a thing, just to cross it off?
No, my point is if.
There's a weak spot, and this is why it's needed, is there?
Is there an alternative to put on a pole somewhere else, another monopole somewhere else opposed, as opposed to extending this one another twenty feet?
You would want another pole, a brand-new pole instead of an extension?
Depending on where it is.
That's, that would be a first, okay, um, I thought maybe we could show the the height. At one forty, that coverage, and then show how efficient it is at eighty-five, maybe make you realize that. Why we need the height, but if if. You're saying that a new pole somewhere else might be beneficial, then extending this, that that would be a first as well, but okay.
Well, but but if we took that a step further, is that, okay, what's the next step down the line when there's not enough cover? When we're not getting enough coverage from the extra twenty feet, you're gonna have to put a pole somewhere, is that a, something that might happen down the line?
I can't speak to the future, this is what, this is.
That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking about, looking to the future, if there's, if at some point in time, you're gonna have to put another pole somewhere else. Anyway, it would might make more sense to do that now as opposed to extending this pole.
Well, this'll, this'll fill our needs now, especially on the highway, if there are two sites that connect to each other. And there's a drop and calls in between that in five years, ten years from now, then there's gonna be a need for another site, but right now, there there's not. Um, so the, but I. We can do some, we'll do plots as well, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
You got two uh virtual headsets? Where you upload the image on a, uh, let's say on Oculus or a Quest uh headset?
Oh, like a VR kinda thing you're talking about?
Yeah, um, so that it's more, more like you're actually standing at the site, looking at the uh, at the, at the tower. You know, not just a picture on a piece of paper.
I see, I know, I can, I guess, I could go either way, but I could see that the actually being there and having the balloon up is, to me, you get VRs. But, and also, I think, Brian, that with, you know, some of the other, I think some of this too is just. Like, Mr. Salisbury said, is that we wanna just feel like if you kinda humor us, or not humor us, but you kind of like at least. Work with us, kinda look into some of these issues, then we could feel like it's at least been thoroughly vetted and not just. You know, I think that's part of it, too.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
And the balloon might be easier than having a VR headset setting it up, I feel like, it'll be more straightforward if we're going to the VR headset, but. I I wouldn't be totally up for the VR headset, I'm just not gonna drive with it, that's all. That that that's quite creative, Aaron, I I did like that idea.
Okay, should we just do continuance then to the March meeting?
For a second.
Continue the March second, second motion?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, thanks, Brian, and thanks, Aaron, and we're, again, we're not trying to be overly difficult, but. It's okay, I think from our perspective, that I have seen before, where it's they've done the balloon test, that's kinda like, well, what's the big deal about putting a balloon up there and. I can see what Art's saying, where it's like, well, if you're gonna be adding that twenty feet on there anyway, why can't you just, we don't want you to shut down the pole, but. Deploy the balloon, you know, at like a, a little distance, I can see that being, you know, kinda boots on the ground to kinda really see it. This would be beneficial for us.
No, there there's some space in that spot, that lot as well to to do something like that, so it's okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Be in touch if something happens with the weather or whatever, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
And let me know date and time, and then we can, I can let the board know.
All right, awesome.
Thank you.
All right, see you, guys.
In just a minute. From Laura.
Down, I didn't see anything. Motion to accept them as a, as a, most, already has them, no?
All's in favor?
Aye, aye.
Much of a cause?
In the motion? All in favor? Yeah.
Forty-nine, we're good, thank you, Pat.